I call the city council meeting to order. First item on the agenda tonight is our invocation of Pastor Paul Elgin is here tonight to lead us in our prayer from the Presbyterian Church and then we'll, please remain standing, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was reading the Bible this afternoon, occupational hazard if you're a pastor. I got to the 13th chapter of John where Jesus Christ is saying goodbye to his disciples and he says this, starting at the 34th verse of the 13th chapter, "A new command I give you: Love one another; as I have loved you, so you must love one another. By this all people will know that you are my disciples, if you love one another." So our prayer this evening is that we can follow that commandment. Pray with me, please. Creator God, we thank you for your presence here. We thank you that we are able to meet publicly to discuss how to best govern this town you have brought us to. We thank you for the many gifts liberty brings, the freedom to worship you, the freedom to assemble, the freedom to even disagree. So as we conduct city business tonight, let us do so with civility and mindful that we are all neighbors, that you have commanded to love each other. Bless this city and its leaders, giving them wisdom in governance. Give us the hearts of servants and of leaders. Bless all who protect and serve this city. Give grace to all in harm's way. Bless this meeting tonight. Give us your vision for our city. In all of this, we pray in the mighty name of Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Donna. All right. Gloria, let the roll call show that everyone is present.
So noted.
Mayor, as far as minutes go, I move that we approve the city council regular meeting minutes from January 22nd and except for the record, the historic preservation commission minutes from November 26th and the police personnel retirement board minutes from January 4th as they're presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes, past minutes are approved. Claims against the city.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims date of January 16th to January 29th, 2019, as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the claims. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain, Mayor.
Okay, so noted. Meeting agenda approval. Any changes to the agenda, Larry?
We have none, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone from the council? Okay. I'll accept the motion to accept the meeting agenda.
So moved. Approval is presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve tonight's meeting agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. No special presentations. We have consent agenda. All items listed in with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion, one roll call vote of the general council. Let me know a separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda.
Mayor McFarland, I move that we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please, Gloria?
Councilmember Hattleston.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McBride.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, the next item on the agenda is item H, which is public comments. This is the public's opportunity to address the council. So I'm going to open the floor and if you would like to address the council, we also have a public hearing tonight, so if you're here for the particular public hearing, you'll have an opportunity to speak then, but you can also speak now and just state your name and your address for the records, please.
Good evening, John McGuire, 941 East Penni Lane. I wanted to get up here tonight because there won't be a meeting before Valentine's Day again and as many of you remember, that was quite an eventful night for me one year ago. And I wanted to once again thank everybody in the city, the residents, the people on social media and the council and everybody who was supportive of me during that few month period where it was a little bit questionable as to whether I could be up here tonight to speak with you and still participate as much as I do. So that is coming up here soon for me and it's made me reflect a lot. I want to again thank the firefighters and ambulance people that came to my aid that night and all the support that you and everybody else in the city gave me during that time and I appreciate it. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, John. I'm glad you're here. Anyone else? Okay, I think Ms. Gloria Diaz has something she wants to speak.
I do. Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. I did want to share something with the mayor and councils, the audience and the community. I wanted to share how proud I am of my daughter. My daughter became an organ donor two weeks ago, this past Tuesday. She donated her kidney to her cousin who was in dire need of a kidney. In order for her cousin to continue to have an active life, she needed a kidney. Many of you may have seen her mother driving around in her vehicle asking for people to donate a kidney. She was a type O, which is a rare type of blood. And my daughter, two years ago, stepped up and was going to be a direct donor, but something happened to her cousin and she could no longer be a direct donor. Six months ago, her cousin was in dire need of a kidney, so she signed up to be a paired donation. Because of my daughter's actions, she was able to participate in a chain of 11 recipients. So 11 people were able to get a kidney donation and are now able to live an active life. The interesting part about this chain of kidney donations is that the first donor was not receiving a kidney. She elected to donate her kidney to start the chain. Five of the recipients are from Arizona and the other six are from other parts of the country. But I wanted to share the story to make the community aware that if you have a loved one, there is hope if they need a kidney and even if your family member is not in need of a kidney and it's not for everybody, but if you have a desire to step up and to help somebody, it is, I know that her cousin is most greatly appreciative and I know that all of the other recipients are greatly appreciative of my daughter and all the others who stepped up to be a donor. And if anybody is interested in getting additional information, the Mayo Clinic is where she participated in and that is in Scottsdale. And if anybody has any questions about the donation, my daughter would be happy to speak to them, they may contact me. So just wanted to share that information.
Please give her our best.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else? I haven't closed the floor yet, so if anybody else has any comments? Okay, seeing none, then I'll close the floor and we'll move to item I, award of contracts and consider ordinance number three, one, two, zero. Kevin?
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract for professional services with Rick Engineering Incorporated, Phoenix, Arizona, an amount that includes 20% contingency not to exceed $87,060. The Maricopa-Casa Grande Highway from North Bianco Road to Russell Road is all within the city limits and is in need of improvements. Of course, that road is, the pavement condition is poor and with the age of that roadway as well as the number of vehicle trips per day and truck traffic that it receives with the agriculture in the area, we definitely need to try and move forward with this project. The proposed design improvements include two significant components. The first one is to complete a left turn at the Maricopa-Casa Grande Highway and Velvista intersection. We've had many, many accidents at that intersection with people driving too fast for conditions and then someone making a left turn and of course, speed in that action creates some issues as well as several fatalities. And the other component is pavement preservation. We are not going to be changing the characteristics of the road. It's still going to be a two-lane facility, but we are going to be making those safety improvements and pavement condition improvements. This project is funded 100% through the Sun Corridor MPO and the, this is done through a 100% HERF exchange with the state. There is $252,000 available for design services and then our estimate of $87,060, which includes a 20% contingency, we don't think there will be any cost overruns, so we don't think there's going to be any outlay of funds from the city directly. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone? Way overdue. That's my only comment.
Yeah.
Just comment, I was in Maricopa today and it's amazing how much structure it takes to do that overpass over the railroad. I was really impressed by that and in the, it needs work, that road between here and there, so.
This project's going to be just slightly less expensive than that.
That's good. All right. No other questions or comments, then I'll take an ordinance number, please, Gloria?
Ordinance number three, one, two, zero. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal for professional services from Rick Engineering Company to provide design services, authorizing expenditure of public funds, public funds in amount not to exceed $87,060 and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number three, one, two, zero, as it's presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Hattleston.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McBride.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next item is our boards and commissions, J1. The first item is considering approval and appointment of Rachel Hernandez. I think Rachel's here tonight. Are you not?
No.
No?
No, I can see her, she's out.
Oh, okay. Well, anyway, we want to thank everyone who has been in the past, these were on consent agenda item, but we put them on the main agenda now because I think it's important that we recognize the citizens who volunteer their time for our boards and commissions. So thank you to Rachel Hernandez for her volunteering for the police advisory board and I'll accept a motion to accept her appointment.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Congratulations to Rachel. And then J2 is considering approval and reappointment of Brandy Clark to the Personnel Advisory Board, again, for a term to expire on February 2nd, 2023.
So moved.
I didn't see Brandy here either, so again, thank you to Brandy Clark for all her volunteer work as well.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve Brandy Clark's appointment to the Personnel Advisory Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Move to item K, K1, consider resolution 5158.
Good evening, mayor and council. We recommend the adoption of a resolution supporting foreign trade zone designation for the proposed Lucid Motors manufacturing facility and authorize approved staff to enter into any necessary agreement with Lucid Motors. We know that Lucid Motors is in the process of building a cutting-edge automotive factory that will produce the next generation of electric vehicles. The first phase of operation is expected to include over 550,000 square feet of facilities and will be producing around 20,000 to 30,000 units on the completion of the first phase. By full buildout, Lucid Motors is looking at having a 1.5 million square foot facility and would be producing 130,000 units upon full buildout. They're also looking into having a capital investment of $700 million and having Lucid in our community will continue to build upon our growing reputation as a great location for advanced technology companies, which would build upon it to leading companies looking into Casa Grande as well. Lucid Motors is currently applying to be part of an active foreign trade zone and a sub-zone under Foreign Trade Zone 75, which is administered by the city of Phoenix. They are pursuing the designation in order to receive the property tax reclassification, incentive and tariff reduction that an FTZ provides. The designation is extremely important to Lucid's effort to locate this facility here in Casa Grande. As part of this application process, Lucid Motors is required to obtain letters of support from all taxing jurisdictions within the site, which is 496 acres. Now, as of January 15th, Lucid Motors now has letters of support from the five taxing Another side note that we have is that Tractor Supply was also able to have a foreign trade zone, as we know, a couple of years ago. To go with the resolution, we would indicate that our city manager and our city attorney are able to take necessary administrative action to effectuate resolution with the Foreign Trade Zone Board and CUSBS and border protection. If this designation is supported and approved by the required federal agency, the taxing ratio on the portion of the property that was determined to be eligible will be reclassified from a class two, which is at 15%, and reclassified to a class six, which is at 5% over the next 20 years. Now, I'd be happy to answer any questions or comments at the same.
Anyone have any questions? Okay. All right, seeing none, then I will entertain a resolution number, please, Gloria?
Resolution number five, one, five, eight. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Pinal County, Arizona, supporting a foreign trade zone designation for the proposed Lucid Motors manufacturing facility, authorizing the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Phoenix related to the foreign trade zone and authorizing the city manager to take other actions and execute such other documents as needed to implement the foreign trade zone designation.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5158 as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Hattleston.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McBride.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. Okay, item K2 is next on our agenda, so consider ordinance number 3123.
Mayor and members of council, tonight, staff recommends that the council approve the use of a CDWG contract vehicle to purchase a storage area network, otherwise known as a SAN. This would include the hardware installation and maintenance in an amount not to exceed That does include approximately $123,000 for the hardware, software and professional services, another $5,000 for the switches and $13,000 for contingency as we are doing the installation for additional switches and cables. This does support the council's infrastructure focus area in that we are ensuring that critical infrastructure is available for information technology. We are heavily rely, we rely heavily upon the storage area network technology for our virtualized networks and servers. This also includes supporting what we need for CAT RMS, the financial systems and pretty much all of the city systems. So the project was reviewed during the CIP process and this is pretty much a five-year rotational item. Every five years, the SANS go to their end of life and so during that time, there would be no support after that, so we're recommending that we do approve this and replace it. We would be moving from 50 terabytes to 75 terabytes. We're currently at pretty much capacity at the 50 based on kind of the technology that we use throughout the city. So again, this is a five-year rotation and then we would not be looking at any additional operational costs in the next five years and then in the fourth year, we would consider what our needs would be for the following replacement. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
And this was part of our CIP. Okay. Lisa?
You know, with technology changing so rapidly and of course, five years seems like a long time, but Selena, is there any way something would come up where we would have to do something before that five years or is it pretty common that municipalities, you know, will extend, since it is so costly, you're going to have to extend it that long?
Mayor and councilmember Fitzgibbons, we did look at the national trends and things for municipalities and this allows us to do the five terabyte growth per year and based on the technology needs and different items that are coming up in conjunction with some cloud solutions, we don't believe that there will be an additional cost within the next five years.
Mary?
So are we doing a combination of onsite and I and cloud storage and that by terabytes doesn't sound, I mean, for what we do, doesn't sound like a lot.
Yes. Mayor and councilmember Cortson, we do have a mix. We have some of our software solutions are actually in the cloud and that provides for some storage there and then anything that actually resides within our data centers, resides on the SAN and so it is a mix.
And can you move that back and forth a little bit so that it reaches that ceiling?
Not really. Unfortunately, it's not really compatible to move things from the cloud to the SAN just because of the nature of the technology that's attached to it. But again, if you remember back on like when a terabyte was a large amount, right? So, you know, the five ter, the five terabytes per year is, yeah, it's quite a bit.
I remember when a gig was a lot.
Right.
Dating myself.
I think you said this and I didn't quite understand all the terminology, but this fits in with our system where we have a complete disaster recovery. If the building burnt down, we'd be able to recover the data.
Yes, so this is a piece of our discover disaster recovery plan. We actually do have some additional CIPs that will be coming forward in March that are the second phase of that DR piece, but this is really the primary portion that is actually operational and so this is where a lot of our operational items sit and then we do a disaster recovery to the secondary system.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I have one more. Sorry, Selena. What if, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about the body cams and storage and capacity and all that. I know we, you know, we decided to put it off, but if we chose to do that and we know that it takes a lot of data and storage, would this be able to handle that?
Mayor and members of council, it would really depend on the solution. Some of the solutions that we looked at were cloud-based and so those would be managed off-site. The other piece would depend on our routine as far as how long are we keeping the data and how long are we deleting it or dumping it and then replacing it. And so it does allow for some growth because public safety is actually one of our largest technology users, so in trying to broadcast what they would need for their different items, you know, we feel that between this and if the solution was purchased, you know, we would look to see where it would sit, but it kind of depends on the program.
This far is going to e-ticket too, right?
Yes, yes.
So that's going to eat up some more space.
True.
Okay. Any other questions? Anybody? Okay, seeing none, then I'll entertain ordinance, please, Gloria?
Ordinance number three to three. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from CDW Government LLC for the purchase of storage area network software installation and maintenance of the city of Casa Grande production data center, authorizing expenditure of public funds in an amount not to exceed $141,166 and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to CDW Government LLC.
Mayor McFarland, I move for the adoption of ordinance number three, one, two, three as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Hattleston.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McBride.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, now we're to our public hearing tonight, Elgin, which is consider ordinance number 1178 dot 396, a major amendment to Tierra Palmas. So the process tonight will, while the presentation from the planning department, then I will open the floor for public comments and then we'll come back to the council for question and/or comment. All right, so it's your.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and city council, tonight I'll be presenting a major amendment to a planned area development. Davis Commercial is requesting a major amendment to the Tierra Palmas PAD to add a new use of wireless telecommunications tower associated equipment and development standards. The location is on the southwest corner of Cortson and Treacle. You can see it blown up a little bit there. It's approximately five acres. A little bit of history on the site, the area was zoned as a planned unit development or a PUD back in 1977. Planning staff is assuming that the PUD zoning was placed on the land as they were proposing a mixed-use development to include office apartments, townhouses, the things that you see out there today. However, no PUD guide or development standards were ever created at that time, so there's not any real specific uses listed, so this one's presenting that new use. The PUD zoning was then changed to PAD zoning in 1987 when we eliminated the PUD zoning. The development standards for the wireless facilities are as follow. The first one is wireless facilities, up to five shall be permitted use on the site. Number two is the maximum height of the proposed wireless monopole facility is 80 feet. The wireless monopole must be a stealth design approved by the planning director. All associated cables shall be internal to the monopole and undergrounded to the source equipment area. Ground-mounted equipment must have a 15-foot setback from all property lines. Landscape to be required at the time of future buildings or future building projects. And then the seventh one is ground-mounted green wall must be constructed of stucco and painted to match surrounding or existing development within Tierra Palmas. When looking at the review criteria for a PAD amendment, we look at the following criteria. I'm going to kind of concentrate on the highlighted review criteria tonight, so we'll go ahead and start in with the review criteria and the first one is the conformance to the city's general plan. The site is located within the neighborhood's general plan land use category. The PAD zoning is appropriate zone for that neighborhood land use category and then also the communications infrastructure is considered a desired necessity within those residential areas. The second one was going to be the relationship of the plans to conditions both on and off the property. Staff and the applicant work to ensure no adverse impact on nearby properties would occur. We did that kind of utilizing three different ways to do it and the first one is that it's a stealth facility. It's a monopole design. You can tell by the name Tierra Palmas and Tierra Palmas and Avenue de Palmas are the two intersections, so it is a palm tree kind of themed area. So with that stealth design, we also wanted to kind of align where that tower would be with the existing palm trees out at the site. And then the third one was with the ground-mounted, with the structure being surrounded by a stucco. A lot of the buildings that you see out there that are existing are a stucco finish in a tan or tone type thing, so that was another one of the reasons that, or that we added those conditions. those conditions. And I'll kind of reiterate a lot of that same theme throughout these review criteria. So, the next one we're going to cover is the setbacks. So, standard zoning would require a conditional use permit if it was on B2, for instance. With that, we do one foot of setback for every one foot of height of the tower. That would lead to an 80-foot setback for this particular facility. You can kind of, this is a rough estimate of where that 80-foot would be. And then you can see that putting a palm tree out in that middle of that area makes it a little less developable, and it also kind of sticks out a little bit in our mind. That's why we kind of aligned it with the palms that are up against the rope. So, with PAD zoning, you do have the ability to customize that setback. So, with this particular PAD amendment, we'll allow the wireless facilities to be placed as close as 15 feet from that property line. Staff believes that that setback's appropriate, as it will allow the stealth facility to blend in with those existing trees, as I've mentioned, and allow, and then you can see the highlighted trees there. And then it'll allow future development to add a cohesive and integrated landscape to the site at time of future development. That leads us into the kind of landscaping. The amendment does not require any landscaping to be installed in conjunction with this wireless facility construction on the site. So, as previously mentioned, the intent is to kind of blend in with those existing trees and allow the future development to create a cohesive and integrated landscape at the time of that future development of the site. And that leads us to the screening. So, again, the PAD amendment requires the ground-mounted equipment to be screened by a stucco block wall painted to match nearby structures. Again, we're trying to minimize any impact to the surrounding site and also minimize the impact to the developability of that site in future. You can see, and this is a little bit of a rough estimate of how it would appear once it's in. This is actually from the end of Tierra Palmas, looking out towards Treacle. You can see that this is the actual facility. Again, it's not probably perfect to scale, but it gives us a good idea of what we're attempting to do or address tonight. One other thing that I wanted to touch on is the City of Casa Grande strategic plan. It does have a goal in the infrastructure aspect of that strategic plan to provide access to the internet for 100% of the citizens by 2019. We think that helps facilitate some of that strategic plan. In regards to notification, public hearing notification, efforts for this request met or exceeded those required by our code. We did get some inquiries and comments, and resident in the Tierra's Palmas Patio Homes and the HOA president for that area, and one additional nearby landowner provided letters in opposition to the proposed project. All those letters were provided within the RCA to the city council, and they were also provided to the planning commission if time allowed. Some of the, we did receive a couple of letters after our planning commission hearing. And then at the planning commission public hearing, the above-mentioned resident, Chuck Wright, who I believe is here tonight, of the Tierra Palmas Patio Homes, appeared at the planning commission hearing to express the opposition to the proposed PAD amendment and the major site plan. In conclusion, the recommendation, planning commission recommends on a six oh vote that city council approved the SA 1800096, a major amendment to the PAD zone to add the new use of a wireless telecommunications tower associated equipment and development standards to the Tierra Palmas PAD. Can I answer any questions?
Well, I'm going to throw the floor open to the public, and then we'll close it and then come back.
Great.
So, don't go anywhere. All right. So, at this point in time, this is a public hearing, and I will open the floor for public comments. Please, if you approach the podium, state your name, give your address, and please try and keep your comments to three minutes, because I will start to give you dirty stares if you go past three minutes.
Hi. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of Council. I'm Mike Campbell. I'm the consultant for AT&amp;T Mobility. Address is 15974 North 77th Street in Scottsdale. Want to thank staff for giving their guidance through this process. It was pretty intricate, and I think it was well-worked out on their side. As presented by staff, yes, AT&amp;T is requesting an 80-foot monopole approval with their ground equipment concurrent with the Tierra Palmas PAD amendment. AT&amp;T's position in this PAD amendment is one of the five, potential five wireless facilities in the PAD amendment. The location of the site was a big topic of discussion at P&amp;Z, and whether we were going to, would it be better on a corner or in line with the other palms? And the comments came up quite a bit was who chose that? Well, it was really kind of a three-way decision between the ownership, the city, staff, and our site acquisition group. Let's put it in line with the others. It makes sense. Yes, this monopole is 80-foot tall at the top of the fronds. We had a surveyor, I'm looking at the photo up there, identify the heights of the existing palms, and they range, the highest ones 40 to 45 feet. It's tough to put a taller palm in there naturally, but we are in agreement to put in, you know, something in the 40 to 45-foot range natural nearby there. AT&amp;T equipment, as was mentioned, will be screened by a new eight-foot block wall or axis comes out onto Tierra Palmas. One of the things that came up again was setbacks. The setbacks to the south is actually 23 feet. I think it's a 15 feet plus eight foot, if I had it right on my drawings. 542 feet to the north, 154 to the east, and 140 feet to the west. That's an important part because the Patio Home Association, my understanding, is to the west. That is very close to a standard setback requirement in jurisdictions across the state. They're typically an area of one to one or even two to one when we have a cell tower that's near a residential. In the City of Phoenix, up against a residential, if we're doing a monopole, we can be 50 feet away, just as an example. But one to one or two to one is pretty standard. So, we're very close to that with 140-foot. With an 80-foot palm, it would be 160-foot. So, this was, oh, the other topic was brought up is a cell tower falling down. As you all know, most of these have, they've been around for, I've been in it for 23 years now. I've only known of one that collapsed, and that was assisted by an individual with a crane. They survived Hurricane Katrina, all the big hurricanes in the south, earthquakes that survived that. These things are engineered, structurally engineered to stay. And watch my time, yes, sir. One of the other things that can be done in the concern about collapsing or falling over is they can be engineered to collapse at the waistband to where the structure would actually, if there was a fault, it would fall, basically collapse down on its own feet. I've not seen that happen. I've not seen one fall over, except for the one I mentioned. Another question that came up at P&amp;Z was where the existing AT&amp;T site serving Casa Grande. Two miles north, McCartney at Treacle, they are on an APS pole that's 65 to 75-foot tall. Two miles to the south, on the fire department monopole, they're on there at 100-foot. Monopole there is 115-foot tall. They have another site, Arizona Road, just north of Florence Boulevard at the APS substation, again, a 65 to 75-foot tall structure. So, this site, this proposed site fits in the middle. When you've got two-mile range out from this location, this will fill in that core, and it does provide the opportunity for the wireless internet, as staff mentioned. I think that was it. I want to thank staff again for their information, their help, their presentation, and for your support, or ask for your support and approval on this, and can answer any questions that you may have.
Okay.
Quick question.
Yeah, we can ask him a question, right?
Is this in anticipation of the 5G?
It will be, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Anybody have any other questions? Mr. Powell?
Do you plan on five of them or one of them?
Mayor, Councilmember Powell, this is for one.
One?
This is AT&amp;T for one structure. Yes, sir.
It's, when you read this, it's confusing because...
This is up to five.
Yes. It's up to five in the PAD amendment.
Would there be only one or...
For AT&amp;T.
So, we could change that part of it up to five?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the answer is yes. So, we...
I guess just putting five, allowing five on that piece of property.
Yeah. And I will mention that the major site plan has already gone through planning commission as well with the reading of this zone change at the same time they did a major site plan. So, it is just for one site at this current time, but that is something you can edit.
Matt?
So, I don't think there's any problem with the wall. You've got a lot of stucco walls in that area and Casa Grande in general. I think it's the height. You said your other one's 50 feet that's up on McCartney. Is that true on the APS pole?
Honorable Mayor, Mr., I'm sorry, is your name Beeman?
Herman.
Herman, okay.
No, no problem.
The one that's up on McCartney is, it's an APS pole attachment, and it's, they're typically 65 to 75-foot tall where their attachment goes on. APS structures are typically 57-foot out of ground or 67-foot out of ground, and I'm not sure what that one is. So, when you have, there's top of their pole plus three and a half feet, then we add our eight-foot antennas, so we have to do some math, but 65 to 75 is pretty common for them.
Because the trees are 40 to 43 feet there?
I'm sorry?
The natural trees are 40 to 43.
Yes, sir.
And this is proposed to be 80?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because this, the graphic isn't very good. It looks like it's the same...
Yes, sir. I agree. The graphic is not a good representation, yes.
It looks like they're all the same size in this graph.
That's because this one's framed.
Perspective, yeah.
Just to touch on that, just simply, I want to add that there are two other monopoles in our city, and they were approved at 70 feet for both of those. One's located on Colorado, one's located on Avenue A. When I went out and took this picture and did the site, I had the ability to do some type of measurements, and I won't say that I'm the most accurate, but that first tree in the foreground there is, I believe, well over 45 feet. But, you know, it's not the most accurate way of measuring, but I can put it in CAD and kind of get a general vicinity of it, and I think it's somewhere around 60. And I will add that that particular tree or that species of tree typically grows to about 65 all the way up to 110 at full growth. But, so that was part of our thinking, but...
Bobby, do you have a question?
Yes. I just wanted to clarify on this issue of up to five. If there was a number two that came, would it come to council for approval?
It would not come to council. It would go through planning commission as a major site plan. And to be honest, I'm not sure if staff would recommend any more. It was just to...
Okay. Thank you.
But if I could, just because I think it is a good question, the application, as stated and as approved by the planning commission, does allow up for five as a permitted use. So, they could put five in there, subject only to the conditions that you have and our major site plan process. You have two different sort of entities here. You have the applicant for the rezoning, which is, I believe, Davis Commercial Properties, who is actually looking for that entire site. AT&amp;T is leasing a smaller piece of that site, so we're really talking right now about the specifics of the monopole that is currently planned and going through the major site plan process. But if it is not changed by council, if you allow five in the zoning, then four other applications could come within that same area. And so I certainly like the applicant, if they're here, to be able to speak to, you know, their ability to do that and make any other future PAD amendments.
And I have one, since this is your poll. Is that exactly what it looks like? Because there are, some of the earlier pictures I saw were not like this, but it could have been inaccurate pictures, too.
Yes, sir, Mayor. The monopole, monopole that is in the site plan is accurate.
So, this picture?
Not this picture.
This is actually from the site plan with some added color.
And what we have experienced in other jurisdictions with monopoles is they set a standard, a minimum standard number of palm fronds and a minimum length of each branch. The City of Glendale's one of them, City of Cip, they do that. So, we're not putting up something that doesn't resemble what is shown on paper. And it's typically the frond count on those is 55 to 65 fronds per. And the fronds must extend out past the antennas.
So, this is a pretty good representation.
Yeah. I can't, sorry.
That is actually cut directly, it's cut and pasted from their site plan. It's just been enhanced with some color.
The real one would have color.
The site plan shows it as black and white, but I don't think it'll be black and white.
Did you have a question?
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Good question. For tonight, what's before us is, again, is that it says up to five. Would we, Brett, would we be able to do somehow where we said we can do one, but we're not sure we want five?
Yeah, of course, Mayor and Councilmember Cortson, of course, this is a rezoning matter.
Right.
And so the decision whether to rezone this property to provide a monopole as a permitted use lies within the legislative discretion of the council. You can do that to limit it to one if you so desire.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for him? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Floor is still open, so if there's anyone here who would like to address the council, state your name and your address, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name's Mary Rodriguez. I reside at 1532 East Irene Drive. That's in Highland Manor. So, we're about a mile away from this proposed site, which it seems like we're kind of out of it, but then I heard this gentleman say that this will now provide 100% coverage for Casa Grande residents. I don't understand all the technology part of it, but it has a broad radius of where it's going to serve, right? So, while you've all covered the visible aspects of this very well, who has covered the scientific aspects of how this will affect people's health? Because this is getting set down in a residential neighborhood, and building is continuing. I'm sure that will all be built out soon, hopefully. But these towers are now posing a health risk to residents, and the science is coming out. That's why we came tonight, because we heard a radio program last night on this very topic. And the science is coming in where it's detrimental. And I didn't bring all the stats and details on what they said, but some research definitely needs to be done on this now as we expand. And we are on the edge of this 5G technology, which is going to not only bring a few cell towers, my understanding is this 5G is going to bring lots of cell towers to municipalities everywhere. So, what is the consideration this council has made for that kind of information besides stucco and setback? That's my question.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you going to answer?
No. I don't have an answer to it.
I think you had a question. It looked like Councilmember Herman had a question. I'm going to anticipate what that is.
That telecommunications act.
Simply to say that while RF emissions have always been a concern for everyone, there is a federal law in the Wireless Telecommunications Act that prohibits us from premising those environmental effects of RF emissions as long as the poles meet the standards of the FCC. So, while there is a push to have the FCC try to amend those standards, while there is a push from localities to try to, you know, rebuke those standards, federal law says that we cannot premise a decision to deny a wireless sighting based on RF emissions as long as it complies with the FCC regulations.
And we're assuming this applies or complies with FCC?
And they have to do that in order to build the, you know, in order to build their monopoles. It's a requirement of the FCC.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Chuck Wright. I'm, I own and operate Penile Design Group in Casa Grande. I live at 976 Basale de Oro in Casa Grande. I am in the Tierra Palmas PAD, and I'm here to speak against this cell tower or wireless communication tower. Through planner Joe Horn, I sent... Through Planner Joe Horn, I sent all seven of you a packet of a detailed list of, of information that I'm going to highlight in the next few minutes.
Three minutes, three minutes, Chuck.
You got it?
No, you can keep going.
Okay. I will summarize what I've said in this letter, in Chapter seventeen forty of the zoning ordinance from, for PAD in Paragraph B, the PAD may exclude, may include any development having one or more principal uses or structures on a single parcel of ground or contiguous parcels. The PAD shall consist of a harmonious selection of tree, of uses and groupings of buildings, parking areas, circulation, open spaces, and shall be designed as an integrated unit in such a manner as to constitute a safe, efficient, and convenient urban area development. So you gotta ask yourself, is a cell tower a harmonious addition to a residential neighborhood and possibly a commercial, a commercial enterprise going right next to it, is that harmonious, okay? Also, Section seventeen one six dash oh three oh speaks of permitted use in specific zones for residential, Table seventeen sixteen oh three A, allows cell towers in UR, RR, and SH zones up to twenty-eight feet, it allows conditional use in UR, RR, and SH towers over twenty-eight feet. Section seventeen sixteen oh three oh B permits specific zones for business, Table seventeen sixteen oh three O primarily allows cell towers in B four, I one, and I two up to thirty-five feet, with additional, with conditional use permit, they can exceed thirty-five feet, the zoning ordinance specifically excludes R one through R four zoning, single multifamily zoning. Just to the west of this tower, less than three hundred feet, is, is the major portion of, of Tierra Palmas' PAD, and most, eighty percent of that PAD is residential, R one, single-family or multifamily homes. Wireless cell towers from thirty-five to eighty feet are so special, our zoning ordinance has provided us a separate design standard for them, they are listed in City Code seventeen sixty-eight one two oh, the Paragraph seven A states, "The commission shall, in addition to any condi, any other conditions, impose the following conditions upon every conditional use permit granted for wireless telephone facilities, the setback requirement shall be thirty-five feet from any property line, plus an additional one foot for every foot of height of, of, above thirty-five feet, this tower will be up to eighty feet from the property line of Tvera, Tierra Palmas Boulevard." This is significant because, later on, I'll talk about the placing of this, of this cell tower, staff and, and the planner have, have neglected, have, have moved away from placing it against Treacle and Cortson, because they're reading the code as, as they'll have, they'll have to meet that property line as far as this cell tower, but they're putting it right on, there is a property line of this piece of property and Tierra Palmas Boulevard and the property to the south.
Hey Chuck, Chuck, you have, I'm gonna give you up to five, you've got another minute, you could, so you might want to get, wrap up your point.
Okay.
I just, just, I'm just giving you.
On January third, the P&amp;Z approved a conditional use permit for T-Mobile at our Casa Grande High, High School for seventy-nine feet, the CUP abided by the UR specification, Urban Ranch, and the tower will be, will be located seventy-nine feet from the district. So, so give this some thought, a cell tower over seven, over thirty-five feet requires a conditional use permit, so why are we allowing an applicant to cite that same cell tower in a PAD without a CUP? So, we believe the staff and the applicant have erred in their proposed conditions by stating in, in, in Sentence five requiring a fifteen-foot setback from the property line, this tower most definitely should be a conditional use permit if we're going by our own codes, we've established a conditional use permit for cell towers in, in those six designated zoning areas, and we're allowing, we're allowing someone to make up a code to go into a PAD, why, how does that make sense? We also oppose this cell tower because it headed, it, it is located at the main entrance of our, of our community, it's located on Tierra Palmas Boulevard, which is the main road into our residential area. I doubt that, that any of you would like that cell tower at the entrance of County Ranch or any other PAD that you might live in, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, my name is Philip Rodriguez, I live at fifteen thirty-two East Irene Drive in Highland Manor, I wasn't gonna come to this, but I read something yesterday that just sparked my interest, let's just say, the, the sentence that said that health wouldn't be considered, and I've been doing a lot of research on this, because, you know, we're all slaves to these things called cell phones, I carry two myself, one for work, one of my own, and we don't know what damage it's doing, you have to be honest, it is doing damage, the companies, AT&amp;T, Sprint, they all tell you there's nothing, yet there's other people who are saying, no, wait, stop, there is. So my only question to the council and to the mayor is, why haven't we, why aren't we looking at that? I know this has all been approved, but it really kicked me in the face when you said it's not a concern, health is a concern to all of us, so I leave you with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I correct that we did not say that it was not a concern?
It's illegal for us to.
What it is is that we can't consider it. I apologize, I don't know, I don't know if my mic went, we didn't say it's not a concern, but what it is, is we're not allowed to consider it.
Because of federal law.
Because of federal law.
Well, shouldn't this council consider that?
We can't, we're not allowed to do that. Can you still hear me?
Is there anybody else?
I'm Guard nine forty-one East Penny Lane, Casa Grande, so as you know, I attend your meetings and I attend all the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings as well, and I was there for the discussion and hearing of this, and as I often state, and the mayor made a comment about appreciating the, the work that our boards and commissions do for us, and that six to nothing vote combined with our staff recommendations carries weight with me, I understand the concerns of the residents here, Mr. Wright just said would anybody not want this in the beginning of their PAD, if they wanted to put this at Treacle and Penny Lane, I wouldn't have any issue with it, I am a believer in property maximization, if somebody is able to use their property in a way that's legal and proper, that the property owner has a tenant who wants to use some of his property for consideration of value, we should allow him to do that. My social media, when I posted this several months ago, when it first came up before the P&amp;Z meeting, lots and lots of positive comments about the fact that we're gonna have two new towers going to town, one from T-Mobile on Union High School and one, and this one included, there's complaints all the time about usage dropping and things like that, so there is a contingent of other people in the city who, who want this to occur, I feel for the residents, I understand it should be consideration, but, but I think our staff has always done a good job in these things, and our Planning and Zoning Commission takes their jobs very seriously, and they should be considered as well in your final decision tonight, thank you.
All right, anybody else?
Mr. Mayor and the council, I'm Kent Griffin, and I live at nine seventy-eight Basale de Oro, which is right in the, where this is my front yard just about, and it's one of those things where, yeah, we need it, everybody wants it, until it's right in your front yard, and that picture right there, I think, those palm trees, I drive by there every day, there's no way that palm tree, Joe, is forty-five, fifty, sixty feet high, it's just not, and it's been that high for the twenty-some years I've, almost thirty years I've lived there. So this is a monstrosity, I think, and I, I appreciate everybody's effort going into this thing, and, but we're, I'm also the president of the HOA there, we are opposed. Any questions? That's pretty clear.
Thank you, Kent.
Thank you.
My name's Larry Winchester, I'm Secretary of the HOA of that same Tierra Palmas HOA, and we are very concerned about it, I live the third house in, so I'm almost underneath the tower, if I go on my balcony and look out on my balcony, I'm looking smack at where that's gonna be, people come to visit us, when they come in, that first, first thing they see is gonna see that tower, they're gonna see that thing there, I'm also have relatives in, in New Mexico, where they have tried to put these towers in the middle of Ponerosa Pines and make them look like pines, can I tell you what, you might think they look like a pine, but as soon as you come around the corner in Riodoso, which is a mountain resort town, as soon as you come around the corner, it's just, they stir right at you right in the midst of the town, right in the midst of other Ponerosa pines, you can make it look like a, like a palm tree if you want to, but especially when it's twice as high as the other palm trees that are there, sticking straight out in it, it's not very aesthetic, I think we'll have a problem with, with prop, with our property values, reselling our properties, trying to do things we need to do there as we're getting older and wanting to do some things there, I think it'll have a reverse effect for somebody trying to put in a business there, retail store or some kind of an office, and I think those things have to be taken into consideration, too, so I violently oppose this as well, thanks for hearing me.
Thank you.
My name is Cheryl Schlegel, and I live in nine forty-three East Cortson in the Tierra Palmas Custom Town Homes, and I am the president of the HOA, and on behalf of our HOA, we would like to just register that we do oppose this tower being in this location, and I'm not familiar with Casa Grande's sending out notices, none of us received a notice before the first Planning and Zoning Committee meeting, and so that's just something I would like to register, that it would be nice to have been involved in the first one, and I'm sorry, I don't take the paper, so that is on me, but just to, to make note, it would have been nice to have attended that first one, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have one more comment.
Sure.
Just based on what you said, that you cannot, because of federal law, you cannot consider health, but you can consider another location, so moving the tower would be a possibility, even though maybe you cannot consider health of the residents, which seems totally absurd to me, but would seem that this council, that should be of utmost importance to all of you, so, my understanding is this has already been approved, this is a done deal, like you guys already all voted on it?
No.
Okay, okay, well, that's good news.
That's what we're doing now.
Planning and zoning.
Okay, that's good news then, okay.
Our Planning and Zoning Commission voted on it.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, seeing no one else approaching, then I want to close the floor and throw it to the council, and see if anybody here has some questions of Joe and, and the AT&amp;T representative, we can always call them back up if you have questions, anybody?
Just, if someone can, Mr. Wright brought up the whole thing with the conditional use permit, can you kind of go through that a little bit with us?
Yeah, so in traditional zoning, or in zone districts, any cell tower over thirty-five feet would require a conditional use, and, and additional one-foot setback is discussed in the presentation for each foot of height, PAD can create their own custom zone district, now, the, the reasons that we think that the CUP was in place to have that additional foot of, of, of setback was to alleviate the, the aesthetics of cellphone towers, and, and the also, it was probably mostly based on lattice-type towers that weren't engineered properly or, or as good as they are today of these monoparms, so the fall hazard, so those two issues are, are kind of what created that code, what we've tried to do with the applicant is, is make this blend in, so that's why we've eliminated and felt that we could eliminate some of that setback, we're confident that the engineering of, of these towers now, it, the fall hazard is not an issue, we feel relatively confident about that, and, and the aesthetics of it, which is the other issue, is, is we feel that aligning it up with the palm trees makes it blend in more than setting it out in the middle, so I, I hope that answers your question.
The trees we're looking at here look like they're all eighty feet tall, is that figuring you put five of those in that driveway?
No.
Actually, the, what you're looking at there is the first, the, the tree in the foreground, I believe somewhere in the forty-five to sixty-foot range, the second tree is actually where the cell tower is going, and, and this, this isn't scientifically accurate, I just wanted to give council an idea of what I think the finished product would look like, the, the following three trees are all existing as well, so, so this is actually a picture taken by staff at the site, and then I superimposed the, the proposed tower.
Would the tower work if it was any shorter, I mean, we got a group of people who own property, and they have rights, and we got people, and they have rights, too, so I'm hoping we can kind of try and figure something out to where we can help, you know, come to some sort of agreement, but does it have to be, I, I guess I'd adjust towards the engineer? Have to be eighty, because I'm getting conflicting reports on how tall.
Do two forties.
Yeah, yeah, do two forties, but I'm getting conflicting reports on how tall these trees actually are, and how tall, and, and so I heard that either our monopole at the city is either eighty or one-fifty, but I'm thinking that one's one-fifty.
Right.
Right? The, at the police, public, yeah, okay, so that one's, it's not as tall as that one there, but you know, that, that's where I'm having a lot of problem, because I understand concerns of everybody, I mean, some people want to have a cellphone tower, people want coverage, some people don't want to look at it, I mean, and I, I sympathize with everybody there, but maybe, does it have to be that tall, I mean, because it doesn't blend in if it's eighty feet, in my opinion.
Can we ask the gentleman?
Mike.
Does, does it have to be eighty feet, Mike?
Honorable Mayor, Mr. Vermon, the lowest, and I checked before I left the office today, RF engineer, let me back up, top of the structure is eighty feet, that includes the palm fronds, top of the pole is actually seventy-five feet, so the branches stick up above it, antennas are below that, in what we call a seventy-one-foot rad center, they gave me a ten-foot leeway to drop it from eighty-foot down to seventy, so the antennas would then be at sixty-one, is that right? Yeah, sixty-one-foot rad center, which is comparable to, remember when I was talking about the APS structures, which are in the sixty-five range, so they would be on the same level plane, so if, we're happy to drop it to seventy feet, total height, if that makes a difference, now, I, I know Joe went out and took the pictures, our surveyor did measure those as forty-two to forty-five foot in height, I agree, that first palm looks taller than forty-five feet. Yeah, okay.
But you're sur, you had someone survey measure that?
Surveyor has it in the forty range.
Okay.
Yes.
So you said total of seventy, does that include the top of the fronds?
Top of fronds at seventy feet, we, I have the flexibility to drop to that if that helps, I mean, a ten-foot does make a difference there.
Definitely.
Yes.
So are you, I'm sorry, are you saying that if it's under seventy, that it is not going to be helpful to the range, are you saying that that's something that you cannot do, so that if it's forty-five to sixty foot, you can't go down to that because it wouldn't be effective?
Mr. Mayor, Pro-Tam Mayor McBride, I was given the instruction seventy foot was the lowest top height that they could go to, I'm not an RF engineer, I know based on the other structures that are nearby to the north and to the south, that they need to be in that same range.
Thank you.
Could we see again how this lines up with the approach?
Could we see again how this lines up with the approach, looking at the? Okay.
Does that, does that help right there?
Okay.
So that's the plan view, so Tierra Palmas is on the south, and you can see Trekkles over on your right.
Right, right.
And Avenue de Palmas is on the left. The dark in the, dead in the center of the image is actual, the actual alignment of, is actual monopole. And then the highlighted yellow and green are the existing palms.
Okay, so driving into Tierra Palmas, and then there's the North Avenue de Palmas.
And the houses are over here.
Yeah, and the houses are over there. There's nothing up between there and Quartzon.
I can go to the area if you'd like.
Okay, yeah.
Let me go.
Let me pass the area. Oh, there we go.
All right. That might help show you how it lines up. And on this, I don't show the site, but it's pretty well dead in the middle of that Tierra Palmas, the south portion, right below that red dash line, or right above the red dash line is where it would sit, kind of right in the middle of that Tierra Palmas Avenue.
Okay, and we're looking at Quartzon on the north on this one.
That's correct.
Up where those, what is there, three or four or five trees in there on that corner?
I believe there's about five, five on that, and then also.
Could it go in that corner?
Along, well, up on the Quartzon corner?
Yes.
It could go there. It's, we discussed it with Michael. We will say that staff felt that that's going to be a key entrance at some point.
Oh, they're meskets.
Those are meskets. Okay, meskets.
Yeah, up in that area is more meskets. And then we discussed the two corners as well.
What about the corner up where there's three palm trees on Trekkle and Tierra Palmas Avenue?
I can tell you our thinking, from a staff perspective and the applicant perspective, we felt that that was going to be a key point for future development, to do their signage, to do an entrance, and to have some key features there. We felt that this took it back from Trekkle and away from a lot of the residents within the city, driving by there, and we left it open to have that be developed and landscaped in a way that's appropriate for a commercial corner, was our thinking.
So it doesn't matter to the people that already live in there, it's a public in the future?
I think we made a lot of steps with this to try and appease all sides here by doing the stealth. I feel that staff's position's relatively clear, that we felt the alignment with the palm trees, making it a palm tree, and casing all the ground-mounted equipment in stucco was the best-case scenario for this proposed project.
Looking at what we're looking at right now, is the cell tower going to go right on the corner of Trekkle and right up here?
Right there.
Right here?
Between these two palms. See that?
Okay, there's, okay, those are palms there.
Yep.
What is this, meskeet?
No, those are palms. There's two palms out here.
Couldn't go down here with these palms?
Can we push it out towards the?
But they said that's where the monument signage might be once that area's developed.
I'm sorry?
That's where they were saying the monument signage would probably be once that area, this area developed into, let's say, some sort of a shopping mall and that.
You know, I agree with the people that live there. I think your home's a very special place. And when you have built your home and you're comfortable in a neighborhood, you shouldn't have something done on bare property that would threaten your comfort or your marketability or anything else regarding the property that you have it on. And if you could move that palm tree to a different part of this location, I think you could achieve that. But as I say, I don't think it's, I don't think it's fair to the people that live there. And, you know, I don't know if it's going to be commercial, or we don't know now, or if it's going to be more housing that would fill in there, because it's, Tierra Palmas is very nice, and going on the other side of the fence to the east would certainly be something that somebody would want to look at.
If it, let me ask the residents, if the location was moved and it's moved further away from your view, would that help? Or you still, would you still be in opposition to it?
What'd you say? Seriously, would it, if it was on, somewhere else on that property, would it make a difference?
Some of the corners there have vacant properties that you could locate, too, that would not be in the realm of housing. Mr. Platt owns farms on that one corner of the north.
He doesn't own anymore.
West corner, across the street there across Trekkle to the east, there's a larger piece of property than what people can, there are much larger, it's got a restaurant, problem with the housing, too. Probably not be so invasive to that particular location as it is where it is now. It's just invasive. I'm not against technology. I love technology, but we got to be, the use of common sense about it when we're putting up towers. You think, people live there, people have money invested, doing things there, and I think you might pull even look at some of the other corners. If that's to be in that area, take a look at some of those other areas, maybe it would be a better location.
Lisa.
And, you know, and it is tough. I mean, of course, you know, we value your input and know this is your property. It seems as though it might be a little bit more of an eyesore if it's just in the middle or on the corner where there's nothing else there. So I understand where staff is coming from, because they think that it might blend in more. But, you know, when you talk about other properties in residential areas, well, who's to say that residential, you know, group is going to come and be upset about, you know, the placement there? And so I think, you know, where I struggle is that it's part of our strategic goals to move forward with technology and make sure, you said that you want technology and approve it, but then you don't want it in your backyard. But we as a, we as a city have to make sure that we're providing, you know, that technology and, because there's a lot of people that don't have access. It's something that's really one of our strategic focus areas, because we know that there's a need. So, you know, I'm struggling. I wish we can come up with, you know, with an agreement that, you know, everyone will be happy with, but I, but it just seems as though it would blend in a little bit better. I've seen these, you know, that look like palm trees in the Phoenix area, and they, I mean, yeah, they're not total real-looking, but it doesn't stand out. And, you know, what's going to come in, you know, on that property, you know, in so many years? You don't know. So, you know, I really do wish we can come up with some type of, you know, agreement, something that compromise, yeah, that we can work with everyone on, but I don't know.
You know, I actually drove it with, and thinking about this, and the idea that they're going to take it down less, but it's like you say, is if you put it anywhere else, it's going to stick out. And, yeah, it's going to be artificial-looking and that. But also, on these houses over here to the left, if one of you all live there, is that the side of a house? Is that a front looking out into that lot?
It's garages, I think.
Oh, it's, oh. I'm sorry? No, okay, so if you're going into, you're going down, I'm passing the, I'm passing the tower and I'm going, and now there's, it looks like three rooftops. The one on the right, is that, is there a window or a yard or anything facing where that tower is?
Yes.
There's a yard?
Yes, that side of the house, that patio home faces out into the, into Tierra Palmas.
Okay.
Well, I'm going to disagree with Lisa. She disagreed with me earlier. I think it's much more important that we protect people's homes than that we keep up with technology, because those towers can go anywhere. They can be put anywhere you want to put them. They don't have to be here. If this is a place where they want to put it, I think it should be back toward the corner. And if it, as I say, I think that's much more important that we take care of, I know, I disagree with John, too, that we don't use all the ground up to try to make money on this. This is a piece of property that's very developable, it's very well-located, and, but the people that have lived there and bought there and are comfortable there, if they're made uncomfortable and feel like it devalues their homes, that's not a good thing.
What about the property owner?
What about the property owner? He still owns the property. He could move it back over to the corner.
He's still owning the property, but you're denying him the use of his property.
He could move it over to the corner.
You're denying him the use of his property.
So the one property owner's worth more than all these people here, Mary?
I'm just saying, you're talking about property rights, property owner. It's not like some out-of-state.
How about the rights of these property owners over here?
I'm just saying, I agree. I agree on both ends. But we haven't talked about that property owner either.
All right, well, Bob?
I'd like to put in my two cents where, I was going to say exactly what Mary said. I don't think we can lose track that the property owner wants to lease space for the tower. He wants to utilize his property as he wants to. And I think that we should have as few rules as is necessary to the property owner on how to use that property. The other issue about we're protecting the view and protecting the entrance of people that live in this neighborhood, I understand that and I have sympathy for that, but I don't think they can control those things. They don't control the view, and they don't control the entrance to this. I think it is an objective of ours to increase the technology so more people have availability to the technology. I think the applicant and the property owner have done a good job in camouflaging this. I love the idea that they're willing to go down to 70 feet. The only thing that I have a concern about is that number of five. I wouldn't want to see five of them go in there next month. I wish we could, or I would like for us to limit it to this one and require the applicant to come back if they want to add another. Anyway, that's my position.
Not right now? Okay.
Just a couple of comments, and I think that Matt said it best, is that, you know, I think that we have the opportunity to compromise here a little bit. And, you know, going down to 70 feet, I know that I'm a visual person, and I know that the picture confused me more than it helped me, because it wasn't to par. And so if I just looked at that, it's like it doesn't look so bad. I think both property owners have rights, and I think that the people that own the property that they want to have this use, we need to be respectful of them. But at the same time, we have whole neighborhoods that have concerns. And I think that we have an obligation. I do want to mention one thing. When the health issue came up, I just want to be very clear, for me, health is an issue, but because the FCC has guided that, we have, we can say that we, that there's a health concern as much as we want, but we would be outside of the law if we didn't follow what they gave us. So, you know, we can't just do what we want on that. So I want to make sure to be clear about that. I, I'm really torn with this because of the fact that we do need to move forward. Technology is in our strategic plan, but I think that if we can compromise, whether that means tonight, or we come back with a compromise that would fit the needs of the people, and at the same time, the property owner, then we need to look at that.
Yeah, I might, I might suggest that we table it and ask the applicant to maybe work with the homeowners to see if there is another location on this property that might work better. At least give them the opportunity to have some input on where it's going to be located.
Would there be ramifications to do, if we did that?
I mean, it just delays their, it delays their project. I don't know if that means AT&amp;T will walk away from it or not, but.
Yeah, that's my only concern, is that.
I would hope they wouldn't, but.
Yeah.
If we tabled this tonight, would there be ramifications?
Yeah, I mean, we appreciate your compromise on the height. You know, I'd also ask that we change whatever we have language in here to just make it one, not five, because I have a problem.
They could always come back for another.
Yeah, I have a problem with five of being in there.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we would want to talk to the property owner, the applicant, about those particular additions that I'm hearing this evening.
Okay, so I would suggest we table it, but do you think? Can I ask?
Can we answer the question?
Can you answer a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, if we tabled this for continuance, we would be fine with that. It would not disrupt AT&amp;T's process.
Okay.
Obviously, speed to market is their goal, but they look at the citizens as customers also, so.
All right, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Can we, can we put a limit on the continuance as far as the next available agenda date?
Yeah, I mean, that's.
I don't want to say nine months out.
That's up, I mean, that's up to us.
And Mayor, could I?
Mr. Mayor, the mayor and council can actually continue it to a date specific, i.e. the next meeting?
Okay. Let's set it on the next meeting, Larry.
Wait, I was wondering if we could have a couple of questions, like, because I had a couple of questions about what the heights, effective height could be. I know you, I know you said you're not the RF engineer, so you can't answer that question, if it would be effective as a 50-foot or 40-foot or 70-foot's the minimum? Because, you know, these are both people's property rights tonight, and unlike a lot of other forms of government, I want us all to work together and see what we can do to, you know, to make this happen, because we respect all that. We want to move forward with technology, we want to move forward with everything, but we're a community here, you know, and that's what it's about, is not taking anyone's rights away, but working together as neighbors. And that's really what this is, is a neighborhood issue. So I'd just like to see if we could maybe work something out like that, and, you know, but both sides are going to have to be willing to work, not just say no, you know.
And I just have one more, please. If we could make sure, because one of the concerns that I heard was notifications were not given, and I really want to make sure that we take a look at how those notifications are done, so that everybody is included.
So, you okay with that, Joe?
Absolutely.
So can I make a motion that we continue this to the next meeting?
Yes, with an ad, ad we want to limit it to one.
With, yes.
Change the language to one.
Well, that'll be part of it.
You really have two options, right? I mean, you can move the ordinance and you can start to amend the ordinance.
Just table it.
Or you can just table this matter until the next meeting, and staff will certainly be working on, you know, I've been working on some conditions based on what I've, you know, what I've heard tonight, that staff will be prepared to present. But many of those conditions may change depending on the meetings that you have as well.
And Mary, you're going to table it to the?
Be the 19th, 19th, actually.
Oh, 18th, yeah, 19th, 19th, because we have President's Day.
And I'll be on vacation, no, I'm.
And I second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to table. This public hearing on ordinance 11783.396. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so it's been tabled.
What was the date?
That'd be the 19th, because President's Day is the 18th. Normally, we meet on Monday, but it'd be on Tuesday.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for helping. Okay. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is reports. So I'm going to start over to my left. Bob, you can start.
Two items I attended, as many of you did, the governor's office budget presentation here in the council chambers. Kudos to the governor for causing that to happen. I really appreciated that. And it certainly sounds like our state is in a good financial position, so that was also good news. Also, I think others may speak to this, but our friend Jim Rhodes passed away recently. Jim was a friend, he was a great community servant. He served on the police advisory board for a long time, and I always appreciated his advice and especially his Detroit PD stories. They were always entertaining. I'm sure all of you know this, but his celebration of life is scheduled for February 7th at 6 o'clock at the Paramount. I know I plan to be there, and I imagine most of you do, too. That's all.
Thank you, Bob. Matt?
Yeah, wanted to report the youth leadership day we had last Saturday. I'm sure you'll hear a little more about it from one of my colleagues as well, but the youth commission planned their annual youth leadership day. They had over 75 kids participate. They had four different seminars, basically youth leadership, college preparedness, life preparedness, community service, and resume building were the sessions. We had keynote speakers, we had icebreakers, we had fun, we had Chick-fil-A. We had keynote speakers, we had icebreakers, we had fun, we had Chick-fil-A, which was a draw, I think, too. But more importantly, we also had a new component this year. We got two $500 scholarships. One was donated from Penile Hispanic Council and one was donated from the youth commission. Interestingly enough, that day, we had a meeting early, because the kids mostly got there at 6:00 a.m. for their meeting, sat up till 4:00 and stayed till 4:00 that day. I mean, it was a long day for them and me. But, you know, they voted that we named the youth commission funded scholarship to Jim Rhodes, Memorial Scholarship. So, and we actually awarded him that day. That was a sudden thing, and the mayor helped award him too. Thank you for coming, and Councilwoman McBride is there as well, she'll talk about that, I'm sure. But anyway, it was a really neat day, and it saw the hope for what's going on in this community. And so we hope every year the youth commission tries to make it bigger and better, so I'm sure next year it will be. We've got more ideas to take home. And we had a lot of people, the people that facilitated were local, people that grew up here too, like Dr. Lou Sanchez from CAC, who I actually went to high school with, he did a good seminar. And two of the kids of the youth commission actually put on two of the seminars. So it was a really neat day. And had a neat opportunity on Friday evening. Before that, Domingo de Gracia performed at the Paramount Theater. And that was a really neat thing to have him come to our town. He comes every once in a while, but he's a very talented, related to the painter de Gracia. And, but he's a flamenco-style guitar player, and it was really neat. And I got to take my mom, and my wife, too. So that was great. And the Casa Grande High School cheer team...
You could get that sweated in.
The Casa Grande High School cheer team won the state championship, which they've been fighting. I used to be a cheer dad a few years ago with cheer mom Lisa over there at the same times, and so, different daughters, of course. Turn that up right now. But they have always been very, they've always been very close to the top, and they finally, and the coach they've had has been doing it for many years, and she finally, we're so excited. So, it was great.
Mr. Powell?
Well, talking about cheer, my granddaughter went to Palm Springs, and they placed very well.
All right.
It was quite an experience.
Congratulations.
And I didn't teach her everything she knows. The, I want to mention, I went up and visited Sarah Porter at the Morrison Institute with George and Michael Chace, Chassy Chase. And the, she has the idea that shame on Penile County for farming, spending that water for cotton and for alfalfa and for those kind of things. And just, there's a sense of that everything belongs to Maricopa County, and if they want to grow, they get it. And, you know, Mary, they're talking about you're a farmer, that they're talking about maybe having 40% of your land not fallowed.
Yeah.
From the water you might get. They're talking about maybe digging some groundwater or some wells.
Oh, yeah.
But the, they haven't proved they have the money to do that yet. That's all a big if. She kind of leans more toward desalinization, but if you think of the price of an acre foot of water at about $2,000 to $2,500, nobody can farm or build homes for water that expensive. So it remains totally unsolved that the passage of the drought contingency plan does nothing, not one thing, to help us prevent the Colorado from running out of water. And that's the first thing they said when we had that meeting, is that all this does is try to move it down the road a little bit. And maybe give us some more time to try to come up with some good ideas. But the, it's, if they hadn't got it in in time, then each of the other states would have got to vote on what would happen to Arizona. And California's kind of hanging out there right now, but we did get ours in. But as they say, water, they're talking about a much more arid Arizona, and water features, farming, I mean, a lot of different things. Golf courses use a huge amount of water. And I don't know what it'd be like playing on sand, but the, anyway, I just, it's such a serious issue. And when I went over to Penile partners, and they had talked to the different mayors, or supervisors, I don't think they realized how serious it was. They kind of acted a little bit cavalier, like, okay, by midsummer, it should be fine, and we're back and we can do all these kind of things. And that's certainly not the case. So Arizona's struggling to try to figure out where they can get water. There's places they can get water, but nobody is brave enough to step out and take those steps, because the, as they say, the floodwaters on the Mississippi that do so much damage, up to a billion dollars, and this year with the cold weather, there'll probably be really a flood on there. Those could be taken to the Green River, Wyoming, and come down through all seven states and into Mexico with new water, with water you could depend on. So it, there's ways to do it. It'll be interesting to see what the powers that be think, but I was surprised how little respect and care they really have about Penile County. We're a bunch of Okels down here, and, you know, the farmers, shame on them, shame on the farmers.
Donna?
Good. Just a couple of things. I'm glad that you mentioned about Jim Rhodes, and I was able to serve with him for a number of years, almost 10 years on the youth commission. He was one of our advisors, so it was really great to see the kids respect him, even though many of them really haven't worked with him a lot. So that was really nice. Also, I wanted to mention, we have Coffee with a Cop on Thursday. Those of you that know Adam Rodriguez is retiring after 21 years of service. He's going to be at his last post that morning, so I'm hoping that folks will go by and visit with him. And I believe it's Starbucks, Chief? Starbucks on Florence?
What time?
Seven to 9:00 a.m., so get there early. And then I also wanted to mention that when we did the youth leadership day, I was lucky enough to do a workshop on community service. And they rotated, so all the kids got to go through all four sessions. And when I talked about community service, I really talked about their responsibility to the city, but our responsibility to them. And they wanted to do some type of a community service project that day. And so what we actually did was every one of the kids wrote letters to the mayor and council. I promised them that I would hand-deliver them. And so I do have all packets of those for you guys. And I will say, just so that you know, the, there were two questions and what they liked most about our community, and then also one of the challenges that they want us to know about. And so I gave them the option whether they wanted to do it or not, they wanted to put their name on it or not. I believe we had three or four foreign exchange students from other countries there. That was great. And then Matt and I got to read, I don't know, 25 or so applications for scholarships. And I just wanted to tell you that, you know, I learn something every day when I work with kids, as you know. But one of the things that they said that concerned me in a lot of the scholarships was when they looked at the small town, that there's a lot of diversity, which is a great thing for us. But a number of them noticed that when they leave Casa Grande and they go to sporting events and different things, that they're treated differently because of their diversity. And from other teams and other cities. And I was really, you know, taken aback by how many of them actually mentioned that. And I think Matt and I talked about it. So I just bring that up because I think that it's important for us to realize that even though we think we know what they're going through, we don't. And so it'll be interesting, I plan on having some conversations with, you know, our education leaders about, you know, what I read, because I was really concerned about that.
Donna, what was the reason they felt treated differently?
Just about their effects of living in a small town and how it wasn't coming from us, but from when they traveled outside of our area. How, I mean, I believe one talked about how they were called racial names and things like that, and it was just really concerning to me. So, anyway, I had a great day. Thank you for inviting me, and the youth commission did incredible.
And Donna was sick, and she's still hung in there all day.
Mary?
Thank you.
I have a few things. First of all, last week I attended a sustainability forum that was put on by Waste Management, and the CEO and president, Jim Fish, was just amazing, spoke, and that, and it's so interesting, because through the whole forum, I'm, you know, we've been hearing about how there's no market for it, the Chinese has shut everybody down, we have all of this. And I'm thinking we need to start looking a little bit differently, because Waste Management, they presented a whole program where they sell most of their plastics and cardboard to U.S. industry. Maybe we need to think larger, maybe approach them and say, and that was one, that was one opportunity I didn't get, was to say, so how are you doing it? How are you finding those markets? You know, will you take ours, you know, and that? But it left me, it left me more optimistic, and what it makes me want to really do is to delay any permanent decision. I know it's tough, I know that we're, at this time, we're stockpiling essentially some of our recyclables and that. They did talk about the contamination and that, but it just made me feel a little bit more optimistic about it, and I'd like to maybe sit down, talk to you all about, you know, to, in particular with Kevin, to see if there's maybe some other direction we can go before we throw in the towel on this and all. So, another thing is, yeah. Another thing, too, though, is I'm getting, again, it's, and I'm repeating myself, that I am so concerned that as we allow new businesses to come in, and we take a look, and we approve the plans and that, and we do traffic studies, and the traffic study says we can do it and it's okay. The business that is opening behind Circle K that I totally oppose because of the traffic, today was a nightmare, and it's not even open. The traffic that's surrounded and the people going around and around and through here and cutting through fries and all of this, I predict it's, we're gonna be very, very sorry we did that, and that in the future, we need to say, this is Casa Grande's traffic patterns. And take what the national standards are and then fit it, because, again, I just, it, I'm just really surprised there wasn't an accident of some sort of what was going on over in that corner. And it's only gonna get worse once it, I mean, there's no business there right now, but once the business gets going. Work on the Neon Sign Park is continuing, and the licensing agreement is now signed. The Kramer Foundation has signed off on it. And I just want to say, I'm sorry?
The polls are in?
Yep.
For the Neon?
And just, but I want to say, going through this licensing agreement and seeing what the Kramer family has done, I just admire and appreciate, and I'm amazed that they're doing this. I'm just really, really amazed. You might get some other private property owner or something doing this. It just, I don't think they would do it. But to be doing this, and it's all because they want something good for Casa Grande. Their father had a vision for the downtown, and this is really gonna bring it to the forefront, I think, and make it really different. Final thing, and I'll keep reminding everybody, that the Science Festival at Park is going to be March 2nd. I know there's a lot of events going on on March 2nd, but I really hope everybody will go down and take a look at this. Encourage, spread the word, because one of their key focus groups is going to be the parents and the junior high, middle school kids, because it takes the parents to encourage the kids to get into the STEM programs and the STEAM programs.
And that's all day, right?
It is all day.
Lisa?
I just wanted to, Chief McCrory, I wanted to recognize all the police officers that helped with the National Point in Time Count. So Casa Grande on the 24th did the homeless point in time count, so of course it's happening all over the country. And, you know, the police department was really active, you know, with Captain Leos was wonderful. I personally rode with Sergeant Inkstrom, as well as the mayor. And, you know, it's just eye-opening. I really, you know, recommend anyone participate. We had a lot of volunteers, I think we had about 30 or so volunteers. And the police department, you know, went along with us, and, you know, they have a heat map of where a lot of the homeless, you know, stay, so it was really helpful for us as we were going out counting, you know, with the police officers helping us identify those areas. So, you know, so again, we hope that the numbers are being calculated. I think the police department, we're hoping to have what those numbers are in the next week or so, but I wanted to thank them, as well as the many volunteers who went out that day. You know, of course, you know, this is how HUD funds some of the programs for homeless, so it's something that's really important across the country. Another important item is the Census 2020. You know, we, the city of, Stephen Turner helped, is coordinating the city's efforts. He put together a committee of different stakeholders that are gonna be important in, you know, rolling this whole thing out. And, you know, we think 2020 is a long way away, but it really isn't. So we're actually kind of behind a little bit, but Stephen, you did a great job bringing the people together. We had the Census, you know, committee, regional person here, a group of about 20 people that are, you know, volunteering their time to, you know, push this effort forward, and they're very excited about it. It's gonna take a lot of work, so excited about that. The mayor's task force on homelessness is really moving along. On February 14th, we have our quarterly meeting, and there's a lot of things going on. You know, the Resource Center is really moving. They're hoping to get that up and going March 4th. The mayor and his committee have been working on affordable housing. We have another committee, Donna's committee's working on outreach and marketing, and then we have another committee working on temporary shelter. So we're really looking forward to the 14th, bringing all those committees together and finding out what they're doing. So it's just been really exciting, because there's been so much support and excitement behind it. So that's on the 14th. And last but not least, March 1st, I think you all got your invitation for the Caesar Chavez Dinner. I really hope you can attend. You know, we'll be awarding over 40, 45 scholarships to Penile County seniors, so, March 1st.
Very good. Thank you, Lisa. My report, we, I want to thank, shout out to Chief Scott for helping and your team organizing the smoke alarm installations we did a couple of weekends ago now. But we were down around the Lynn Cola area this last time, so we, I think I replaced probably 20 smoke alarms. My group, my group did. So it was, it was interesting. I also attended the ULI Trends Day, which was the Urban League up in Phoenix, so it was interesting to kind of get the perspective of outside agents on what's going on in the state of Arizona. And then, again, we did the Point in Time Count, the Homeless Point in Time Count, and actually got a contact who reached out me today. I don't know if you remember, Lisa, we went to that One Mobile Home Park, and that guy, the caretaker, I gave him my card, well, he gave it to his, the owner. So the owner's reached out, and he has five or six empty units there that he would be willing to work with us on for full-time housing for homeless. So we're starting to get our foot in the door on this whole process, so that's a good start. Rural Transportation Advocacy Council Ledge Day was this last week. And then today, I was at CAG and the Suncor Metropolitan Planning Ledge Day. So I'm legislated out, and, but there's a lot going on, and all the bills are starting to hit. This is the time of year that we need to keep an eye on our legislators, because some of them don't like cities and like to take our tools away from us. So as we move through this, I'll continue to use Larry to give you guys the information, but I'd appreciate it if you would help and act and contact our local representatives and make sure that we're letting them know how we feel on some of these bills, because there's a bunch of them in here that are not good, and there's some in here that are...
Like the landlord?
Yeah, like the landlord one, that's coming.
Isn't that guy turned out yet?
Oh, gosh, I hope sooner than later. There's also a partisan bill, HB 2201, that wants to change all city elections to partisan elections. There's only one city in the state of Arizona out of 91 cities and towns that has partisan elections, that's Tucson. The rest are all nonpartisan. And why the legislature seems to think they need to tell us that we need to be partisan when we're better off not?
I think we're a good example. As a city council, we can get along, and we're not Republicans or Democrats, and...
Oh, I mean, this bill overturns more than 100 years of... Oh, I mean, this bill overturns more than 100 years of good practice, you know, in Arizona. It's ridiculous, so, anyway, tell your legislators to vote no. Just vote no. And there's a bunch of other stuff coming, so I'll share this all with everybody. Youth Commission Leadership Engagement, it was a great event. Thank you, Matt and Donna. February 8th is the kickoff for the Pony Express and the Cowboy and Odom Tosh Days, so that's this Friday, when the Pony Express comes and we start, and we deliver, start to deliver the, all the invitations to the rest of the cities and the county. So that kicks off this Friday. And Odom Tosh is coming, and Cowboy Nana Days.
Yay!
Mary on the horse.
And that's all I have. So, anybody else have anything else you want to mention? Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
I have a...